The first day is the morning. Hopefully, it'll be a pleasant spring and a lot warmer. Any public comments or unique comments today? Hearing none, move on to the approval of amendments of the regular meeting of the February 21st committee. Right here, motion by Ted Bates, second. Second by Westy Wilson, all those in favor. I bow, staring none. We'll move on to our educational showcase presenting our annual audit report. It is Amy Patrick. And then the floor with Amy Christ. Dr. Michelle Bednoff.
Exactly, with all of you guys with me. So, good evening, everybody. You all were provided your draft financial statement. I'm going to go over a few of the highlights, but if there's any questions at any point, please let me know. I will start off by saying, as it has in the past, the audit went very well, working with Cassidy and her team, getting all the information we needed. As in the last few years, we're always on, we're always waiting for the last piece of information to come from New York State for the TRS pension information. So, once we got that, we were able to get the financial statements drafted and be able to present that to you this evening. So, the financial statements are really in the same format as in the prior years. There's no new accounting changes this year that affected the organization. So, for those of you who have seen the financial statements in the past, they're really set up the same. The only changes are the activity during the year. So, the first part of the financial statement, pages one through three, I believe, are the, one of our first opinions. So, the financial statements are management's. They provide us with the documents. They give us the financial statement Excel files. We attach the footnotes to it, get information from Cassidy and her team to kind of compile this. But the financial statements are management's and all we really do is give an opinion on those financials. So, the first two paragraphs, we've audited the company financial statements. And then, in our opinion, the financial statements present fairly. So, that's a clean, unmodified opinion, which is the highest opinion we give as a profession and what the institution has received in the past. The opinion further goes on to talk about what management's responsibilities are and what my responsibility as your auditor is. Then, after that, we have management's discussion and analysis. That's pages four through 10. And what that's supposed to do is allow the reader to pick up the financial statements, read these six pages and kind of get the gist of what happened at the college during the year without reading the whole thing. It also gives some information that allows management to add some narrative as well. Talks about, you know, the factors that are affecting the college in the future. One of the important things to know is the financial statements include the college, FCA, and the foundation as an entire entity. You see them, there's primary institution, which is the college, and then we have FCA and the foundation. But middle of the page, on page four, we say the remainder of the MDNA will focus primarily on the results of the primary institution. So, the MDNA is mostly all college. As you get further on, it will bring in the foundation and bring in the FCA. But this, this part of the document is specifically for the college. And that first bullet says, as of August 31, 2024, the unrestricted net position, you taking out long-term effects of the other post-employment benefits and the pension long-term information is 6.8 million. And a couple thousand of that is your encumbrances. So, your unrestricted net position for the college itself is 6.8, not factoring in the long-term information that are required by GASB. Also informative in the MDNA is on page six. Here you have, you can see this takes into account the pension systems and the, and the other post-employment benefits, but you can see your revenues and your expenses compared to last year. So, you can see your total revenues were up about a million, expenses of about $300,000. So, instead of decreasing the overall of net position, whereas last year was 1.1 million, this was about 350,000. But again, this takes into account all the post-employment benefit liability, which is that actuarially valued number that is for your health and dental insurance for your current employees and retirees out into the future, and also the pension systems as a whole and your proportionate share of either their overfunding or underfunding. Page nine is your operating fund. So, this is specific to the college, specific how you operate, takes out those long-term items. And this is your budget to actuals for your revenues and your expenses. And so, your operating budget, you had budgeted a break-even budget and instead increased, added surplus to your deficit and decreased your debts. Then, after that, starting on page 11 are the actual financial statements themselves. So, this is your statement of net position. It's your balance sheet. You can see your assets and your liabilities. Like I said, the primary institution column is the college, and then you have the foundation and the FCA. So, here, your total assets for all the entities combined is about 27.5 million plus you. And your liabilities combined is about 11.1. And then, our fund balance in that position is comprised of some or some unrestricted funds, our encumbrances. The, the foundation has some restricted funds for scholarships for specific purposes. And then, we have our investment and capital assets and debt. And that's just the portion of our fund balance that relates to our buildings, our equipment, things like that. And then, the next page shows you how our net position changed. It's our statement of revenues and expenses and changes in that position. So, it shows again for those three columns, what our revenues were, what our expenses were, what our non-operating revenues and expenses were, and thus the change. I'm going to skip through the cash flow and then go to page 15. 15 starts the footnotes to the financial statement. So, what these do is they give you some more detailed information on the numbers that are in the financial statements. It gives some more backup to seeing just a number on a line. And then, it also gives more information on the college, who you are, what you do, how you account for certain items. So, here, footnote one, right on page 15, says the reporting on state, that's the college, including the FCA and the foundation. We include those discreetly presented component units in that. Then, if you jump to page 17, there was one new accounting pronouncement, which at the top talked about accounting changes and error correction. We had no error correction, so we didn't have to worry about this accounting pronouncement or this change. But there's a couple new ones that are coming up that will work with Cassidy on and her team in terms of making sure that all gets adopted. The one that will be for next year is compensated absences and how that's calculated. Then, going, I'm going to jump to page 22. Page 22, I talked a little bit, talked about the long-term pension. So, the college, all other municipalities that have employees that participate in ERS and TRS have to record a, either an asset or a liability for the pension bonds, whether the ERS system as a whole or the TRS system as a whole is either found to be overfunded or underfunded. TRS this year was found to be 102% funded. So, there was an asset on your books, your proportionate share of that asset. And the ERS system was found to be slightly underfunded as a whole. So, you have your proportionate share of that liability. But those assets and those liabilities are on your books. There's a ton of footnotes, this is one of them that relates to it. But again, it's not, nothing that, that the organization can control. And it doesn't change how you spend your funds. The state still can request the same monies from you based on the contribution rate. So, it's just more documentation in the financial statements that really the college doesn't have any say over. If you go to page 26, just want to point out, I mentioned in the beginning that as you go through the, the footnotes, you see some stuff for the foundation, you'll see some stuff for FCA. So, footnote five, investments, these are the foundation's investments that they have. And broken down between the with and without donor restriction. Some are temporarily restricted, some are permanently restricted where they can only use the earnings off of those funds. So, this is just that detail to give more information on those investments. The next page, page 27, has your fixed assets or capital assets. It has the capital assets on 27 for the college, which is your land, your buildings, equipment, infrastructure, et cetera, and then the depreciation on that. But then, the next page shows those for the FCA. So, the colleges were first, then we have the SEAs. And in the past, we had a sentence regarding the land that the foundation owned. But since that's been sold, that's been removed from the footnotes. Jump ahead, has a bunch of footnotes that relate to that actuarially valued liability for your post-employment benefits. It's there, you're complying with that requirement, having the actuary value that long-term liability. And there's a bunch of pages, footnotes on that. We do have one new, one new footnote this year on page 34 in regards to your health insurance. So, since the college switched over to a self-insured health insurance, we are disclosing that as of August 21, August 1, 2023, the college established a self-insured plan and gives a little bit more detail on that. So, that's a new disclosure this year due to the change that happened. And then, after the footnotes, starting on page 36 and going through page 41, we have some supplemental information that's required to be in the financial statements. Information that talks about pensions and the liabilities, our tuition, et cetera. So, those are just required to be in there, they're in there every year. So, we're complying with those requirements. Then, after that, I'm going to jump to page 44. So, in the very beginning, I talked about our opinion on the financial statements. That was the opinion that we issued on those. Now, we have to issue an opinion on your controls over financial reporting and compliance. So, we're not an internal auditor, where we're coming in and we're diving deep into all of your controls. But we do look at your controls, we assess risk over financial reporting and compliance. And here, we have no significant deficiencies, no material weaknesses to report. The controls that the college has are operating, are operating well. We have, we find no issues when we come into, do the audit, so this is a clean opinion as well. And then, we have one more opinion on page 46. So, because the college spends more than $750,000 of federal money, we have to do a compliance audit with those federal funds. The last couple of years, when you had the COVID funds, we looked at those. But historically, the largest amount of federal funding you have is your student financial aid cluster. We look at that. We had no findings associated with that. Everything over that is operating and operating well. We did have an issue a couple of years ago with putting some reporting on the website in terms of that COVID funds. That's gone, we have no issues with that, everything's clean. And then, so that is why, if you go to that last page, you'll see right at the bottom on page 51, a couple lines up, we say that you're not low-risk. You're only not low-risk because two years ago, you had that where you didn't put something on the website timeline. Next year, it'll be year three, you'll go back to low-risk. And all the low-risk means is we test only 20% versus 40% of those federal monies. But when we're looking at student financial aid, we're auditing like 70-some percent anyway. So, it doesn't really affect anything, it's just a checkbox here. So, and that's a pretty quick overview of the financial statements. Did anybody have questions on the audit process, the financial statements as of 31, anything they wanted to go over?
Do you want to have your questions? How many questions, with all the changes in the federal government, will that affect our audit?
The audit, it won't affect, it may affect, I mean, Greg would know more than I in terms of, and Cassidy, of what could affect your funding levels and all that stuff. But the audit itself and the process we go through, we still have to follow the same procedures, whatever your numbers may be in terms of your, your funds that you receive, so.
No questions? Not, entertain a motion to go into executive session for personal work history and also to discuss pending litigation on a lawsuit. That motion may come out of executive session by Bethany and Secretary Difler. We decided to make the call after Ed Jazemski.
There goes enrollment.
No, good idea. Okay, we'll move on to reports, chairs report. The only thing that I got is I was asking, I had my CCT to, is the, for to all the trustees of the upcoming regional, I mean, Northeast regional meeting, which will be held on Wednesday, Friday, April 25, 2025, 9:00 to 3:30 PM at Mohawk Valley Community College. If you want to go, I'll send the link to all the trustees. They also have Thursday, March 27, 2025, report by Zoom call about financial countdown, budget updates, advocacy essentials. They're going to be talking about what, what the trustee should be doing. So, I'll send both of those links to the trustees or, or if you can send them to the trustees. So, I'll have, I can't attend the NYCC spring meeting, that's a great prior commitment. But if you can go, I'm sure it'll be a good time, could be a lot of conversation about different things. With that, move on to the president's report. Dr. Michael Miller.
Sir, and as a segue to the conversation that the NYCC is having about advocacy, that'd be a good time to talk a little bit about the one-house bills now and they are out. So, we talked before about the executive proposal and the highlights of how that impacts us. So, this is a chart that SUNY's put together that you probably can't read very well from receipts, but I did send it out to you, both of you, to come out. But in terms of the base aid, as you recall, the executive closed essentially level funding and included the funding for, the assembly added $30 million for additional operating aid, subject to a plan approved by the budget director. And the Senate put in $9 million. So, both the Senate and Assembly are obviously trying to help us out. We'll see where they end up with negotiations. On the three community colleges that we talked about, you know, the governor's proposal that had restrictions associated with age and, and the type of degree that they pursue, the assembly actually threw $100 million at it. They, they removed a lot of those restrictions in terms of age, in terms of the type of program that you enroll in. But they also changed it in the sense that they needed just a tuition scholarship that they posed to the governor's proposal that is there, it's tuition fees, books, supplies, et cetera. But they also, and the Senate did the same thing. They included the Ag and Tech or the technical campuses such as Cobblestone, Bell High, Morrisville, et cetera, into the equation. So, they, they kind of dilute the pool a little bit when they, when they add them. The Senate didn't add any additional funding to their proposal, but they did, you know, include the IAD guys. And so, again, we'll, we'll see where that, where that ends up. There's some additional items that they included. There, there is some additional funding that's been proposed for full-time faculty, primarily interstate operated campuses, it says, for community colleges. But there are strings around that that don't make it necessarily appealing for us. The educational opportunity program, the governor had proposed a reduction in that program. Both the assemblies, Senate have added additional funding, in this case, the Senate, a lot more than the assembly. So, we'll see what happens there. There was also a proposal by the executive to reduce the high knees nursing program funding. Both the assembly and Senate restored those. So, again, we'll see what their, their final negotiations look like. Another item that, that could potentially impact us is the executive proposal for the ASAP program, which is a college completion program. We have actually in our interest in participating in that program. They are, I received notes today that they're waiting to see what happens with the state budget or they notify any campus that expressed an interest. Both the Senate and the Assembly seem to be on board with this. One of our initial hesitancies about joining that program is that it's expensive. And it's based on a CUNY model. CUNY has kept it going by providing funding to support that program as a, as a line item. This is essentially giving the same thing. So, it's now a one-shot of funds. If we're accepting, it's based on the number of students that we serve. It would increments of 150, with 150 minimum. They provide some funding to support the staff that needed for that program. So, as I said, Marlene and I have met with them, we indicated our interest, and we'll see where that goes. Another area that they seem to have agreement on is the early college, high school PTEC funding. The executives continue proposing to continue those grants and add some additional funding for smart scholars. And then, there's another program that she's looking at that funds college and high school programs, both the assembly and Senate seem to be on board with that. Capital funds, again, they all seem to be in agreement with that, that's, that's positive. Then, there's some additional things, you know, the governor was, is continuing to linger around with the A for part-time study program and the part-time TAP program. Both the Senate and Assembly seem to think that whatever she wants to do is tight. Interesting change with the Excelsior program where instead of the college providing the reimbursement, then the reimbursement would go directly to the student grant from the state as opposed to us having to handle that. So, there's, I think that has a potential upside. Looking at, you know, there's differences of opinion on expanding the number of years for TAP eligibility. The Senate's throwing an extra year in there. The Assembly and the things that they are not necessarily on board with that. They also proposing the HESC, which ministers TAP, put out some rules on a verification method for homeless students that no one else seemed to be too concerned about that. So, they also have some additional language about, you know, this is more about the, the differences between the, the pre-community college programs. So, this is the governor's proposal, we talked about that in depth at previous meeting. And again, what the assembly has said is they'll provide tuition awards. They're including the, the tech sector and they're, they're taking out that no prior degree or furniture, which is interesting, so. Then, there's a few other legislative changes that have an impact for us, one of which is mandated reporting for cybersecurity incidents. This requires us to report to the New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services within 72 hours. The Senate was okay with it, the Assembly does not agree, so we'll see where that ends up. Hopefully, we don't ever have an incident where we have to worry about that. But if we do, it's another layer of bureaucracy that we need to deal with. The governor's proposing an extension of the waiver of civil service exam fees through next year. The Assembly is saying two years and as is the Senate. So, you know, we have a couple of the units on campus that, where that applies. And then, also related to cybersecurity is the governor's has got a legislative proposal out there that would require us, because we are considered a local government entity, to provide annual cybersecurity awareness training. That's, that's bad practice and it's going to dovetail in with something that's to talk about a little bit as well. But the other piece of legislation that the, the governor is proposing is that there actually be a dual enrollment policy. This, this has to do with high school enrollment. This could be good and it could be bad. But there isn't a formal policy out there outside of, you know, there's, there's an understanding that we have a sponsor region and other institutions aren't supposed to tread on our sponsor regions. It, it works uneasily. The other fear with this is that, you know, there's been, there's an uneven approach where tuition is charged in some areas in year one. And, and some schools are not charging tuition. And that has caused, you know, some discord out there. And so, this, this policy could in fact establish a uniform approach, which may or may not be good for us. The other part that the Senate and the Assembly have proposed, that one in the executive is regarding patcher to faculty unemployment benefits. So, you know, again, these are legislative issues that could generally impact us if, if they're putting in place. So, a few other things I just want to talk about, and not to steal Jim's thunder, but I don't think it was in the report either. We did have a bid opening yesterday for the Student Welcome Center. We had two bidders and a little bid was within budget. So, the architect is revealing those documents and, you know, a re recommendation for the town cycle in April. We expect a subcontract to be awarded for that work in the two April meetings for the two counties. I think construction will occur later on this summer. I did let you know, we did have a campus power outage a couple of Sundays ago. Had a lightning arrestor under a high voltage transformer that caused a short and took out the entire campus for a few hours, most of the day. But we know that it actually worked the way that it was supposed to, but it did need to be replaced. And that campus was ready for Monday, so most people didn't know, didn't notice any sort of impact. We have had some initial bargaining sessions with our CSEA and our ESP units. We exchanged ground rules and received some initial proposals. And we'll, we'll be setting up a whole FMCC negotiations team meeting soon to, to go over that information. We had recently been notified that we have to appoint a chief sustainability officer by SUNY. So, this doesn't have to be a new hire. It's similar to, you know, hiring or appointing their chief diversity officer. It is something that every campus has to do and there's, you know, responsibilities associated with that. And so, we're in the process of reviewing the requirements for that. And we'll be applying this with that shortly. And then, what does that do? So, SUNY has passed a number of sustainability initiatives. There's a lengthy plan that they put forth on, you know, it's, it's got climate goals. It's got ways that campuses should be helping protect our planet. And there are requirements that by certain deadlines, we have to discontinue single-use plastics. We have to, you know, stop using latex balloons for our vents. And there's measurements that we have to take on our recycling. We have to provide that information on a manual basis to SUNY. Those are things that are already in place, they really don't have anything to do with this particular position. But this position is intended to coordinate those efforts on campus, including, while this is largely something you see in state-operated campus, a connection to an Indian program, sustainability, and those kinds of things, so. And then, another policy that we're required to implement and be compliant with is the SUNY IT security policy. We have until September to become compliant with this. So, this relates to some of the initiatives that the governor has put into legislation or proposed legislation. And we have engaged our partners in SUNY I-Tech to help us achieve that goal. So, we had a kickoff meeting recently and we have an existing security policy. They'll be reviewing that and updating that to appropriate. We are also a member of the SUNY Security Operations Center, which provides, you know, penetration testing and, you know, reviews our annual security questionnaires and provides guidance to us. So, there's going to be training involved with this for our staff. And at some point, you'll have a policy in front of you for trustee Wilson to present her actions. And I'm going to save all the juicy stuff for my friend Dan down there later on. But I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Anything I talked about or anything else that's on my mind. And of course, what's, what's probably on some of your minds is the recent announcement of, you know, the federal government potentially eliminating the Department of Education. We talked a little bit about this last month. You know, none of us knows what this really means or what the implications are going to be or what kind, what level of disruption will happen. So, we'll continue to honor that. That's, you know, something that SUNY meets with us regularly on as well, just to, you know, we do know it has the potential to impact some of our revenue.
So, how will it be affected?
Not according to the, the reports that are out there. Student financial aid is not, is supposed to be impacted. Insert the higher education, the Office of Civil Rights is supposedly supposed to still function. And, and those programs that are dispersing, saved to students are still supposed to remain intact. There's, you know, discussion with those things in other agencies. But, you know, the truth is, none of us. you know, the truth is none of us, including I think the administration, knows what any of it means or how it's going to go out. But there was a precedent regardless. So we'll continue to monitor that and report to you on any real impacts that we have. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. That's very good. Now we move on to College Assembly Report. It's included in your packet. And the chair is not with us this evening, so. Student trustee report, he is also on this. Okay, all done. Foundation report, trustee Gus.
I'm going to do it for trustee Gus. Actually, I'm just going to defer to the, what's in your packets, but I just want to highlight that Pralla Gallery will have an art show for the entire summer. I will notify the board when it'll start and it will go through the fall time. Barney Bellinger has agreed to bring in a lot of his different paints. He does sculptures and paints whatever. So it should be quite a show and I'll get back to the word information on that. For golf, twenty eight of our thirty six foursomes are already committed. I'm sure by the end of next week, we will have the last eight committed. Sponsorships are coming in great. If you haven't signed up for the AI program on April fourth, please do. Chris Nancy, as we have spoken, will be an attendee there. Also today we had a nice surprise. Well, I got notified yesterday. So Johnstown Hospital Foundation came and we did a photo op. They did eight, they gave us eighteen thousand dollars for our Rad Tech Nursing Scholarship Program, three thousand, three, three thousands for each area. So we did a little photo. It'll be on the website and on the foundation website. So that does conclude my report unless anyone has any questions of me about anything.
Just a reminder, trustees, golf hosts are responsible for one thirty five dollars each.
Thank you.
So whenever you get a chance, send in your check. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Stacey. We move on to educate. The many reports to finance with trustee Beck.
Okay, everybody received their packets. There was nothing that we really needed to highlight and we spent a lot of this evening on the audit and probably on that. The only thing I'd like to state before I ask for a motion to approve the audit is to just say thank you to Chazzy and her team for the professional job that they've done that we heard from the auditor. And it's nice to, to, that isn't necessarily something that they have to say. So it's attagirl. And on that, do we entertain a motion to accept the audit? You can stand in a second.
Second by trustee Taipei. All those in favor? Post. Motion passed.
And that ends my report.
Thank you, trustee Beck. We'll move on to buildings and grounds with trustee Andrew.
Hey, we have just one thing to highlight. Our buildings and grounds report was a somewhat bad bit. The government budget proposal contains FMCC's capital project plus, including additional paving, upgrades the athletic acres. These projects were previously included with both towns capital plans. Once the state budget receives approval, we can begin signing these efforts. And concludes our reports.
Thank you. Any questions or trustee Andrew?
If not, I'm trying to academic affairs with trustee Grant. Thank you. Keep it brief. The Student Association of Bull and Mero Donations Community Event on March third. That was on campus. It was also open to public that researches for blood cancers like lymphoma, leukemia. And that's in interest of that event are in the packet. In the Rad Tech program, well-known urgent care presented on campus regarding employment opportunities. And also several organizations, including Nathan and Power, St. Mary's, Ellis, Worthmore, New York. Our employers have reached out to the current senior class with employment opportunities. And five students in our senior class have accepted employment offers. So that's great to see. Following along with Brad Pack, they obtained a brand new Shimatsu Mobile Dart Evolution MX eight. God, that's a wonderful idea. Not a nice user. Thank you to Leslie Lancy, the FM Foundation, and Dr. Trump and Will and Brooke's assistance in securing that funding. That, that piece of equipment is a portable X-ray unit that will allow Rad Tech students to operate the latest technology being used in real world applications in the laboratory setting. That's always great to see that. And then in business community partnerships, FM has ten students on internship this semester, majors including business technology, early childhood education, cybersecurity, networking, media technology, digital arts, business marketing management, addiction services and human services and the HVAC certificate. So we thank those local employers that are giving our students real world experience. With that, hoping through my report.
And you have any questions for trustee Preston? No, thank you. We'll move on to trustee Harris.
Right. Before trustee affairs is to be packet, but I do have to highlight. Baseball season practice has begun. The first games are set for this weekend with a home game on Saturday and a late Sunday, both against HVACC. And this is exciting because the college is starting back to competing in baseball again. The team was disbanded in the spring of twenty twenty at the start of the pandemic. So it's good to have that back. The admissions office has been busy with various events, including early admission info sessions and instant ad admit info session, school visits and college nights. Spring open house is scheduled for Saturday, April twenty sixth. And refer to you for the name if I mess it up, but Luis Malzannado Pointe Books, yeah, okay, I didn't want to butcher it, was the recipient of the excellence in service above and beyond the word at the SUNY Empire State Service Port Student Conference held at the beginning of the month. This is just a little side note that's not in our package, but we'll probably see more about this happening. Veterans and Military Affiliated Club is being reactivated under the label Veteran Student and an open house for the Veterans Lounge is planned for Wednesday of next week. The outreach to veterans and military affiliated prospect and current students as well as all adult students in general is a key strategy for FMCC's initiatives under a SUNY grant for adult learner initiatives. We recently were awarded a fifty thousand, fifty thousand dollars for this and which will provide funds for marketing and life services. So adult learners can experience the sense of belonging to others. That's just a little something that wasn't in there that thought that was important. Snacks you was prepared for?
Thank you. Yes.
Yes. So I just wanted to highlight, it's not my area, but the games are going to be held at Veterans Field at Shutterworth Park, Shutterworth Park in June, starting on Saturday. Cause our fields are undergoing some renovations. So, and I know that was there.
Thank you. No other questions for trustee Perry? We'll move on to diversity, equity and inclusion with John.
Thank you. Should be in your packet. Let's see. One thing I forgot to mention, I actually mentioned it, but it's correct. Since we do twice a month, the chief diversity officers throughout the state imagine that we're pretty busy, but there are those meetings, certainly a little less of that. See, actually we cover, I want to point out that that's a nice program. Have attempted this thing. So I think that's a most supportive thing. Whenever I make one of these lists, I make it with the perspective that all these events can finally create inclusive, supportive environment for students. Move barriers and increase everything. So that's sort of if I work, if you ever wonder what's going on. I gave, given you a list of something events that did occur, some days that did occur, upcoming ones too. So we have a whole list of adventures. Easter, Ramadan, the end of the month. Let's see. Oh, so it's coming up over the issue. Any questions?
No questions. Thank you, John. Appreciate it. We'll move on to accreditation. Dan?
Yes. So a lot has happened since the board has last met. Couple of major milestones that we hit to get to that ultimate goal that we have, which is reaccreditation and the reaccreditation actually, actually won't happen until June, but our site visit will be in April. So the first thing, one of the most important things is that our self-study report was, was submitted and all the supporting documentation, evidence also submitted to middle states. And last week we had a mock visit with a third party to come in and give us those offhand size and kind of run us through some, some practice questions. So thank you to the, to the chair, to trustee Wilson for, for attending the meeting on, on the board's behalf. And so just to update you on, again, where we're at, how that mock visit had gone and then to give you some information that you can use in preparation for those, for that visit in April. So your packet is probably pretty large at this point, because I've included some stuff in that, in that packet as well. So the first thing would be, like you said, a visit was last week, on the eleventh and the twelfth and visit, you know, went well with a few areas of focus, you know, a few areas for us to tighten up. Nothing, you know, extreme by any stretch of the imagination and we're working to address a few of those things. Some of those things are are like, you know, the language that you use. You know, not being, trying to be overzealous or oversell, but just, you know, to answer the question in, in a manner that, you know, that is being presented to you. So, you know, things like that, we're working on making sure that we're getting the right people in the room for the right meetings. And, but like I said, overall, the visit went well. The feedback from, from the team was, was positive. The feedback from the campus was also mainly positive. I think people appreciated having the chance to get some practice. There was definitely some nerves and I mean, I would include myself in that group, you know, in regards to speaking to people about what you do on such kind of like on such a grand scale, you know, and how you're, what you may think is your little job on campus, how that really fits into how they, how it affects things that happen as a whole on campus. So I do think people appreciated that. Based on that feedback and some of that feedback that we got had to do with size of groups. So, you know, some of these groups were, were pretty large on the eleventh and the twelfth because we were really working under a really set short time period. The faculty would be a perfect example of that. You know, we had probably fifteen or at least fifteen people in the room. So, you know, just some practical advice, like no more than four to six people max in, in these, in those meetings. Take notes and have notes. And that's a little bit of what I've tried to provide to the board this evening and what we have also provided to the campus as a whole. So we've got what we're calling like a cheat sheet or a one pager that we're, that we've distributed to the campus. And that people can kind of think through their thought, think through their thoughts, put their thoughts down on paper and have them in front of them. So when that question gets asked, you know, of them, they, they've got some things to work from. One of the documents I gave you is actually a modification of, of the template that we've sent to the campus. And then we're going to share that, some of that mock visit feedback to the campus at the next college assembly, which will be the next two stages. Yeah. So. Just moving forward, some of the logistics. So we have a meet group dinner at the Holiday Inn on Sunday, the sixth, that starts about four o'clock. You know, with a, with a little social hour and then a dinner at five with, with the visiting team. We've been in contact with the visiting team. And then the bulk of the work for the campus is on Monday, the seventh and Tuesday, the eighth. That's when they'll be conducting their interviews. And then the exit report is on Wednesday, the ninth at ten AM. It's, they come in, they tell us what their findings were and they leave. They don't, they don't make questions. There's no interaction. There's no press. There's no questions, anything like that. They, it just basically, obviously, or leave. And we are right now, as, as early as this morning, finalizing the site visit schedule with the visiting team. I can tell you that the, the board meeting is, is tentatively scheduled for, for Monday at three PM, Monday the seventh at three PM. There's always a possibility that could change, but we're trying to keep that later in the day. I have a feeling that we'll be able to keep that, that time slot for, 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 for interviews. Some more specific items. So they mentioned the mission, shared governance, strategic planning and line of succession. And none of these, I say more specific, right? But these are things that came out of the feedback with our, with our consultants. But mission is a big one. Okay. And that, that ran across campus. There's probably only a handful of people on campus that can recite the mission of the college. Right? So what you'll see on the the piece that you have in your packet, it has the mission. You'll see it has the mission right on top. And that's going to be true for anybody that carries this teaching into their, into their needs, right? We want everything to flow from the mission, the goals of the college. We want people to be able to speak about how their jobs or what they do on campus contributes to that mission, helps the college achieve those goals, achieve that mission. Also on that, 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 that document that I gave you, I've also included those areas that they kind of asked the board to highlight, which again, would be shared governance and strategic planning and line of succession. And I, I think the key there for the board is with shared governance is just to kind of remember that, that there's an interconnectivity between the board and the college assembly and the student assembly, student senate association. We have, we have a student trustee. You know, the there, there's, there's basically interrelationships between those three different entities that all share, sharing governance. And then the strategic planning process on the second page, just to be aware of how that process is done. And in, in the past, the, of my understanding, looking at the documentation, like the board has, you know, either done a retreat or had, you guys have always had input to this. I think the last time around, it was just a little bit different where there was actually more member on the strategic planning committee. But to generally to understand that, that the board, you know, does have input to the strategic planning and how strategic planning is done on campus. But I thought this one was a little like, if you're not out of the blue, maybe, maybe the trustees in, in the room, they, they have a, a pound or two, but a line of succession and just understanding if the president is away for any length of the time, who, who's kind of in charge of the campus, running the campus. And that there is a, a policy series that's.
And yeah, shouldn't we appoint another member to be on the strategic planning board? We didn't appoint Jennifer when she was here.
I, I think it's, I think it's good that going, going forward, once we get, once we get past this visit in April, we're going to need in kind of short order to start that planning process again. So I, I think it would be good. I think it's helpful. I think it's a good, you know, it's a good opportunity for the board.
So if anybody's interested, raise your hand now while I raise a hand.
Or you're going to walk.
Or, or you're way along the walks.
Um, just a couple of the things. Again, that, that document's not completely filled out, but you know, the core job responsibilities. Those are right on the, the policy manual. Again, so just some information for you to have there. The second document in that packet is the list of questions that, that the mock interviewer had with them in that they didn't necessarily have a chance to answer every, to ask everything, obviously, of the two, the two board members. So the question and just some, some possible responses. And again, just to get you thinking about the, the type of questions that might be asked and what, what, what responses might be. What I can tell you in kind of working on this document was if I saw the word ensure, to me, that triggered the word policy. So board policy, what is board policy? How does the board ensure things? Or generally, policy? If the word monitoring came on, the, my, the word that came to my mind was reports. So the various reports that you guys receive and give be, you know, kind of like trigger words, I guess, if you would, in response to any questions that you get when, when the visit, when it actually happens.
We did.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We nailed it. We did. We, or we nailed it exactly. That's what I heard. That's what I heard. Well, just a couple of other things.
Fire packets.
I would, I, I'd encourage the board to, in, in the, in the self-study report, to review chapter one, chapter six, and chapter seven. I actually left chapter two off, and I, I'd encourage the board to, to look at that too. That's ethics and integrity. So.
One, six, seven.
One, two, six, and sevens. Yeah. And, and one, one is a, a pretty short read. And, and seven is all about board policy or mainly about its governance. So it's about board policy and what you, what you do. Number two, that's some, some information about conflict of interest and policy review. A lot of what you guys have been talking about tonight in regards to the IT policy and, and, and financing, the, the financial stewardship of the college. Those things would be in, in, in standard two. And there's also a piece about hiring, the evaluation discipline, the separation of, of employees in, in chapter two. So, you know, the, the force role in overseeing that would be something, something to review. And then my, I guess one of my other comments or my last comment would be that I, that I encourage participation in the visit in April. So having a couple more board members, having, having three or four of you would, would be good. It would, it would take a little heat off the, off your, off your fellow board members. But it also represents the college. Well, that's, that's just encouragement, nothing more. As you go through those documents that, that, that you have in your packet, if you have specific questions for me, feel free to reach out. I'll, I'll certainly get back to you and answer, answer the questions.
Because of the very only time to maybe meet them or then it's, it's gonna end. You're talking about.
Uh, yeah, yeah. So, so good, good questions. So when, when the visiting team comes and sits down with the board, their questions will mainly be directed in, in some way to the, to those chapters.
In the past, I believe all of us attended the meeting.
Sure.
All of us.
Yeah, you're all welcome. Absolutely. You're all welcome.
Yeah.
We also understand that some are not involved.
Yeah, it's something that you just come up with somebody, but it wasn't on, we're there, you know. It's nothing, yeah, we, they were very nice people. Yeah, they sound like they're here to get us. No, they are here to guide us. We had, we had a very good experience with that. We went through it twice and then so forth.
There's some specific examples. Like I said, we, if you haven't looked at chapter seven already, when you look at chapter seven, you're going to see a lot of numbers and the word policy. Next thing, it's how, how the board goes about governing and how.
Any other questions?
Okay, there. The one thing that we've been, I don't think today is, is that we've had a new team chair. So the, the gentleman that was here in October, he met with us, no longer, his parents are here. Has given a short timeline, something like, but the team's going to be just six people instead of seven.
Other questions? We'll move on to personnel because trustee Short leads. I'll read it, and it's basically Julia Thayer signed as senior accountant effective February twenty-first. Greg Young moved from C-Step in Step Director to Assistant Dean for Academic Affairs effective March third. Agency searches in progress or on pending. Director of Student Financial Services, full-time as a whole. Senior Account Full-Time in Progress, Cyber Security, Computer Information System and Structure, Full-Time in Progress. Criminal Judges Full-Time in Progress, Principal Account Clerk, Student Financial Services, Full-Time and Part-Time in Progress, Computer Programming and Analysis, Full-Time in Progress. And that concludes the policy report. Personnel, excuse me. We'll go on to policy. Trustee Wilson.
I have nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. Okay, and thanks, trustee Wilson. You already did that.
Oh.
Now, in other business, we have to move the main fifteen meeting. If we could move it to main fourteen, which is a Wednesday, the day before, is there any problems with that? Okay, and then June nineteenth meeting, we have to move it to June eighteenth. Is there any problems with that?
June what? June eighteen.
Wednesday, June nineteenth.
The whole Wednesday.
To the Wednesday before.
Yeah.
June eighteen.
Eighteenth.
Moves to there, June fourteen.
June nineteenth is moved to June eighteen.
Just the day before.
Yeah, and June fifteenth is moved to June eighteen.
No, May.
May fifteenth is moved to May fourteen.
Yeah.
Do you have any other business we've got before the board?
Will we be, will we be receiving a schedule of events of, of maybe upcoming meetings with the accreditation people?
Yes, we, we are still working with the team to develop the schedule. The meeting is, I'm the new chair today. So we'll provide that to them for their feedback. They'll give it back to us and we'll distribute it.
Thank you.
I do, I was, I had included the, the trustee, I had included the SUNY Security Policy or required to comply with at your place for your veteran reading of joint. Any care, there's three areas in there that are highlighted that, that you need to pay attention to yourself.
Okay.
What do you think you could have asked me about those?
Yes. One last thing before we conclude this is every year NYCT, during their fall banquet, they give awards out. And over the years, we've had several trustees receive awards. I would like to take some recommendations to the possible trustees who are deserving. There are several types of awards. One's the RAP Award, which is for outstanding trustee, I guess. There's a couple of other ones for trustees as well. So if you have any ideas of who you think would be deserving of such an award, please bring it to our attention and have to move on to our board. We have to get the recommendations in for the next month, I believe it is. I thought about trustee Shuma McGee. She was our, our chair for a couple of years, did an outstanding job.
Yeah.
Maybe for the RAP Award. So.
She's always informative on any legal issues. She always is.
So that's something that the rest of the trustees can agree on, for one. Go ahead with that. If there's any other ones, but, but let me know as soon as possible. With that, motion to a chairman? All those in favor? All those standing up? Thank you all. Be honest with the April second, January third.
Thanks.
Second.
Sunday. I think I have you on.